Go ahead, before we get started, welcome everybody here, but before we get started, I'd like to welcome Pastor Jeff Kane, who leads us in our invocation from C3 Church.
Thank you, sir.
Let's bow our heads. Father God, we thank you for this time, God. You, in your word, you say to pray for our leaders. So, Father, it's our honor and our privilege today to lift up the mayor and the city council to you as they attempt to lead us and guide us and establish this community, Father. We pray that you'd give them all the wisdom, the peace, and the grace, God, that they need to do their job. And so, Father, we pray that you'd be with them, that you'd bless them, and that your hand would be upon them as they make decisions and they further this community. We thank you for all these things, God, because we know that you're faithful. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, Pastor Kane. Appreciate you being here. Okay, I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Milton City Council for Monday, April 8, 2013, to order. If the city clerk would please call roll and make any announcements.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll be happy to call roll for the April 8, 2013 regular meeting. I would like to remind those in attendance to please silence all cellphones at this time. Additionally, those attending the meeting who would like to provide public comment during the public hearing or during the call for public comment, you are required to complete a public comment card prior to speaking on the item. There is no public comment for consent agenda items or items under first presentation. Those called to speak will be taken in the order that the speaker cards were received by the city clerk's staff prior to the beginning of tonight's meeting. All speakers will identify themselves by name, address, and organization if applicable. The city council may allow public comment on either an agenda item or general public comment from a representative of such an organized group or association, provided that the individual shall file a notarized affidavit that they have the authority to speak on behalf of said organization on a form provided by the city clerk prior to the agenda item being called. Demonstration of any sort within the chamber is prohibited, so please refrain from any applause, cheering, booing, outbursts, or dialogue with any person speaking. Please show the same respect to the person speaking that you will expect to receive yourself. Anyone in violation will be asked to leave. As I call roll, please confirm your attendance. Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Here.
Councilmember Karen Thurman.
Here.
Councilmember Matt Koontz.
Here.
Councilmember Bill Lusk.
Here.
Councilmember Bert Hewitt.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Longoria.
Here.
Councilmember Lance Large.
Here.
Tonight, we are honored to have the sons of the American Revolution lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Would everyone please rise?
Along with some special guests to help them out.
That's right. Ready, go. Left or right, face? Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands in my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Left, face? To the front, left.
If you guys don't mind, I'd like to ask the council, and if you guys are troops and are sons of the American Revolution, to come up here and we'll get a picture with everybody. Again, thank you, guys, for being here and helping us out. We welcome everybody else here to the City of Milton, our council meeting tonight. And our city clerk will please call our first item.
Our first item this evening is approval of the meeting agenda. Agenda item number 13085.
Okay. Anybody have any changes or recommendations on the agenda, some staff or council? If not, I'll open up for a motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve the agenda as prepared and presented by staff.
Second, the motion.
Okay. We have a motion by councilmember Longoria, second by councilmember Hewitt. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any discussion? That's unanimous. So, do we have any public comment?
We do not, sir.
Okay. We will move on to the consent agenda, if you don't mind reading the consent agenda.
Our consent agenda begins with approval of the March 18, 2013, regular city council meeting minutes. Agenda item number 13085A. Second, approval of a construction services agreement between the City of Milton and North Georgia Concrete, Inc., for the Landrum Road Bridge Replacement. Agenda item number 13086. Next, approval of a professional services agreement between the City of Milton and Pond and Company to provide final engineering services for intersection improvements at the Hopewell Road Birmingham Road intersection. This is agenda item number 13087.
Okay, do I have a motion and a second?
Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as prepared by staff.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. The consent agenda, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, we'll move on to reports and presentations.
This evening, we have Patriot's Day proclamation presented to the sons of the American Revolution. This is being presented by councilmember Bill Lusk.
Proclamation for Patriot's Day. Whereas, April 12, 1775, is a momentous date to the founding of our nation, once celebrated with other patriotic holidays. And whereas, in the early hours of that day, Paul Revere, William Dawes, and Dr. Samuel Prescott raced through the Massachusetts countryside to warn fellow citizens that British troops were coming to arrest their leaders and seize their stores of munitions. And whereas, answering this alarm, patriots took up arms, congregated on the village green in Lexington, and during a confrontation with British troops, several patriots were killed, thus marking the beginning of the war for American independence. And whereas, on that same day, determined patriots lay in wait for the advancing British at Concord's North Bridge, and during the intense fighting, they repulsed the British, who then began their retreat to Boston, with the patriots harassing them all the way. Whereas, news of the shot heard around the world galvanized public opinion in favor of the American Revolution, including reluctant Georgians. And whereas, it is appropriate that we recognize the importance of this day in our history and remember the sacrifices endured by many patriots during years of struggle for American independence. Whereas Milton County honored John Milton, a Georgia Continental Officer whom the British captured at Fort MacIntosh in 1777 and imprisoned at St. Augustine. During the British capture of Savannah in 1778, Milton saved Georgia's public records by taking them to the Carolinas and later to Maryland. It returned the records following the re-establishment of Georgia's government in 1782. Milton County became part of Fulton County in 1931. And whereas, the City of Milton is named for John Milton and is within the county once named for him. Now, therefore, the City of Milton proclaims the 8th Day of April as Patriot's Day and encourages our citizens to honor the many patriots for whom Georgia counties and towns are named, and pay tribute to all the patriots of the American Revolution, given under his hand and the seal of the City of Milton, Georgia, on this 8th Day of April, 2013. I'd like Saul to go down and present this proclamation.
City clerk wouldn't mind reading the first presentation item.
Our first item is consideration of an ordinance to adopt amendments to the fiscal 2013 budget. For each fund of the City of Milton, Georgia, amending the amount shown in each budget as expenditures, amending the several items of revenue anticipations, prohibiting expenditures to exceed appropriations, and prohibiting expenditures to exceed actual funding available. This is agenda item number 13088. Next, consideration of U1301, B.C. 1302, Birmingham Highway, State Route 372, East Side, Luca Gianturco, for a use permit for one baseball field and an 8,800-square-foot barn. A concurrent variance is also requested to delete the 75-foot buffer and 10-foot improvement setback adjacent to AG1 residentially-used property and provide a 50-foot setback along the north and east property lines, Section 641143B. This is agenda item number 13089. Next, consideration of T1301, AT&amp;T and American Towers LLC and AT&amp;T Mobility Corporation, 14295 Birmingham Highway, Allen Smith, for a new 140-foot-tall, 145-foot, including screening tree branches and related antennas and equipment wireless telecommunications facility designed as a tree. Agenda item number 13090. Our next item, consideration of RZ1308 to adopt a new use permit within Article 9, Division 5, Miscellaneous Uses, Section 641840, barns or writing areas. Agenda item number 13091. Our final first presentation item this evening is consideration of RZ1309 to amend Chapter 64 zoning ordinance, Article 1, in general, Section 64-1 definitions as it pertains to barns and writing areas. This is agenda item number 13092.
Hey, do I have a motion on the first presentation items?
Make a motion to approve the first presentation.
I have a motion by councilmember Hewitt, second by councilmember Koontz. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Doesn't look like we've got any items on our public hearing, zoning agenda, or unfinished business, so we'll move on to new business. If the city clerk will please say on the item.
First item is consideration of a professional services agreement between the City of Milton and Michael Elliott, Ph.D., for the purpose of providing facilitation services for two subareas within the Route 9 North Visioning Study area. This is agenda item number 13093. Ms. Kathy Field.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. By way of background, as you know, the city is undertaking a visioning study for the area we've dubbed the Route 9 North area. That's the area, the corridor along Route 9 north of Bethany Bend to the Sykes County line. During the course of this visioning study, we have identified two areas that we have found it very difficult to achieve any consensus among the chief stakeholders of these two subareas. The two subareas are the Bethany Bend area and then also the area in front of the Five Acres subdivision. In order to move this study along and to try and achieve consensus for these two special areas, we felt that it would be prudent to hire a third-party mediator to help achieve consensus among the chief stakeholders. And the chief stakeholders for both of these areas include the landowners as well as the neighboring subdivisions. So, we would like your permission to hire at a rate of $125 per hour a professional mediator. I've attached to the very back of the contract his resume. You can see that he has the technical expertise. He is both an architect and a city planner, as well as a Ph.D. from Georgia Tech, has had a lot of experience in mediating, and we felt it best to bring in a third party to help us with this.
Question. I wasn't at the last meeting, but how was this received by both, you know, the landowners and stakeholders from both sides?
That's a good question. Both groups representing both of these subareas, the landowners as well as the HOAs, are willing to participate. Five Acres has their group already organized in terms of who they would like to bring to the table for negotiations. And then, we are working with the Bethany Bend group at this point, and they are working. The landowner is willing to come to the table, and now it's a matter of just finding out which neighbors to represent the areas should be on that list of stakeholders to come to the table.
Okay. Any other questions for Kathy? Matt?
Kathy, there's, I was at that meeting, obviously, and I think it's a good idea of what we're trying to do here. I mean, obviously, the, a lot of opinions are flying around with this and would love to be able to come to a conclusion on this. I think this is a great way to go about doing it. Couple of questions, though. Which is the, obviously, both areas are, those two areas, one on Highway 9 and one on Bethany Bend, they will be treated separately?
Yes, correct.
Right, so they're not going to be the same. Those will be separate days?
Absolutely, separate meetings. Everything will be separate, yes.
Right. So, explain what the, I mean, obviously, while I was at that meeting, there was questions about promotion of the meetings. How will this be promoted so that, obviously, everything is public, everybody can be a part of it, right? Explain how that works in this mediation process.
Well, we'll work with the mediator to sort of set out the process. The way we've had, I've had preliminary discussions with Dr. Elliott, and what he proposes is that we identify a working group. Now, how big that working group is will really, of course, be something that the neighborhood would have to propose to us. I proposed about 12 people, just thinking that that's a working group. It could be more, it could be less. And again, that would be up to the neighborhood. And that he would first contact them individually, each of the members, by phone, and talk to them to find out what the issues are that they feel, our issues, and what they would like to get out of this consensus-building session. What are the deliverables, so to speak? So, he would do all that beforehand, and then he would hold meetings. Now, whether or not he would have all the stakeholders, that is, including the landowners, as well as the community representatives at the same first meeting or two separate meetings, that's a little bit of detail that I have not gotten into yet with him.
Sure.
But we would certainly have those discussions first, so we would have it all spelled out, so to speak. Now, these are all public meetings, of course, so the public, of course, is always invited to come. But we would hope that we could work with a working committee at the table. And then, if we needed to have subsequent meetings with the public to bring them in and to build a wider audience, we can do that. But that's something that I would leave the specifics to Dr. Elliott to walk us through.
Joe?
Kathleen, so this is part of the broader Highway 9 visioning work that we're doing.
Correct, from the Bethany Bend to the side.
Yeah, so we're having trouble specifically with the Bethany Bend area and the area in front of Five Acres.
Five Acres, correct.
But you're proposing that we do mediation with very specific stakeholders in this group. So, who gets included? I mean, you mentioned the property owners, you mentioned the nearby residents, the people that own homes right there. Is Crooked Creek included as part of that?
Yes, as a matter of fact. I did ask a representative from Five Acres to develop a list of community representatives, and he brought in a few members from Crooked Creek because they do overlook those parcels. And there was another, is it Lake?
Lake Laurel?
Lake Laurel.
Right, that's right there as well.
Exactly right.
What about, what about people that aren't part of a subdivision, they just own homes right there? How are they organizing themselves? Or, I mean, because, obviously, those subdivisions you talk about have the benefit of having an HOA, so they've already elected people to represent them. But homeowners, people that own homes on open roads, don't have that.
Yeah, we've contacted them individually, so all of those landowners on the open road, they have contacted them individually.
Okay, so mediation normally ends when the mediator makes a decision, a decision that neither of the parties could have negotiated on their own. And the parties normally say, hey, we'll live up to whatever the mediator says. Do we have any other examples of any of these visioning plans that we've ever done in our history where we had to go to mediation?
Not that I'm aware of. You've been here longer than I have.
No, I'm not here.
No, no.
Yeah, I sort of find that odd, because normally, you know, these studies are, you know, they're just that, they're studies.
Right, right.
Nothing gets set in concrete, no real decisions. I mean, I don't want to make it sound like the work isn't important. The work is very important. But in order for us to act on anything, it normally has to come before the council. The council has to weigh in on it, those types of things. So, I find it a little strange we're taking this step. Is there...
We try very hard to get a vision from everyone for this corridor. We found that we had two major stumbling blocks in that these groups were so far apart in terms of a vision, in terms of the collective stakeholder group being the landowners and the neighborhood, that we just did not see us getting to a vision. The other parts of the corridor, I will say, the community pretty much, the sort of the classic planning process went through, and the community pretty much determined what the rest of the corridor should look like. But these two areas specifically, we were not able to come to any conclusions whatsoever.
Yeah, and trust me, Kathleen, I wouldn't want to be in your shoes trying to manage this. That's not my point. But I am a little bit concerned that if we engage mediator, mediator takes the temperature of all the parties involved, they come up with a decision, the decision goes into the vision document itself, all of a sudden, we've done something that leads the participants to believe, now that we've mediated this, there's a decision that's been made. And that's normally not what we do. And so, therefore, if it came before the council and the council decided something completely different, the people that participated in mediation all of a sudden think, holy, what was the mediation all about? I thought we came to a decision. And really, that's not the purpose of these visioning documents or studies.
Yeah, let me see if I can help respond to that a little bit, because I was the one that initially offered this opportunity to Kathy to explore. And part of the reason is because when we were in these visioning sessions, we were so, so diametrically opposite in the viewpoints as to where we were. The staff was walking into the room trying to facilitate these meetings and was immediately the enemy of somebody because it was so opposite. You know, it probably is better to use the words facilitation services like we have here as opposed to mediator. I've been in mediation as well, and as long as nobody's happy, the mediator's successful at the end. You know, even in talking with Dr. Elliott, he likes to phrase what he does as consensus building as opposed to mediation. So, our goal here is to get the elected officials and our staff out from being the absolute bad guy to 50% of the people that we're interacting with, so that everybody's voice matters and everybody's voice is heard, and so that we're not doing what we so delicately try not to do, which is to take sides and to be neutral in these things. You know, the neighborhoods over there and the residents certainly have a view. Property owners have a different view as to what they believe they're entitled to do on their land. And, you know, to some degree, there probably is a middle ground solution. But that's why I kind of offered this to Kathy was I said, you know, I sat in the back of the room at the last visioning session, and that just, it wasn't effective facilitation because we're too involved. So, the goal here is to really just have an outside facilitator, try to build a little bit of consensus that might be able to be built between these opposing views. Maybe looking at it through that lens, it's...
No, I understand that, Chris, and, you know, the whole, you know, we're always the enemy of somebody. You know, that's the city council's job. I mean, that's why we're elected, because we have to make those kinds of decisions. And those decisions are rarely 100% backed by 100% of the people involved. So, I understand what you mean. I'm just worried that we're directing the council accidentally. You know what I mean? We're making a decision that the council's going to have to back up when the council's mind may be something completely different.
You know what, let me add some, too, you know, based on Chris. In these meetings, there's such a widespread between, say, homeowners and property owners in these areas. And what we were finding is, they're not even willing to talk about options. I tried to kind of say, hey, guys, if you didn't have this, what would you, you know, what's the next step or whatever? Well, they're not even going to talk to us, and vice versa. So, you know, the intent was this, to really, as this study goes along, to come up with some ideas that they, neither side may be thinking of, but that could go in this plan. That, you know, you know, for a good example, maybe homeowners on one side or neighborhoods may say, you know, well, we don't want this, but we'd be more, you know, we'd be okay with this. Well, maybe the landowner didn't know that. Maybe he, you know, gives them some direction. And if it fits in with the overall plan that we all adopt, then, you know, just gives us some maybe out-of-the-box ideas or pulls things a little bit closer.
I agree, though. I am a little bit concerned that the decision is being made strictly based on what is, what they come up with. And really, it does take the council out of it, because it would be very difficult for us to...
Well, yeah, and I would just say, I'm okay with that. I'm all in favor of getting you guys the tools that you need to get the job done, because I know, I happen to know, you know, there's been a lot of talk and discussion about these particular pieces. And even though I haven't been attending the meetings, we've been getting plenty of emails on the subject. And I guess my point would be, let's make sure we reiterate to the people, hey, this is going to be in the visioning study. We facilitated as we needed to, but the council may go a completely different direction.
And that's true. The concern is not, this is not making a decision for the council. This is just like in anything else where we hire a consultant, they give us ideas. We can agree with it, disagree, or whatever. And the other thing I think our citizens need to realize, these particular areas aren't, you know, we're not just picking on them. They just happen to be in an area that was left out of some other studies. So, we just tried to be proactive and include them in a study, get the input, you know, try to paint a picture from what our citizens see and see if that works, so.
And I agree. I think it's important that we do come up with what we do want in those areas, because we don't want the courts making those... areas, because we don't want the courts making those decisions for us. The courts are the last people you want to make, have make any kind of land use decisions for you. So it is important that we come up with what we feel like is appropriate and not appropriate for those areas.
Totally agree. Let me just follow up one last thing, and I was very clear in the last time I met with one of these groups, I said, you know what, you know what it means when we get done with the visioning session, is that we got done with the visioning session. And that's all, there's nothing magical about this finish line. This finish line is the end of a visioning session.
It's not a zoning.
That still, for any future action to occur, would still either have to go through a use permit process if one's required, a rezoning if one's required, and that's a four to five step process. So, you know, the magic in getting done, you know, to getting done with a visioning session is that we got done with a visioning session. And that's really about as much magnitude as it has as we move forward to, you know, have that corridor be what it needs to be.
Yep.
Joe?
I know you mentioned Bethany Bend is the other study area. Didn't mention Oakstone subdivision specifically, though. But I assume you're going to have the same type of representation from them as you will have from Crooked Creek and from Five Acres, too.
Yes, yeah, our whole, and also from some individual landowners along there as well, so that we do have a good representation. Absolutely.
Looking at the scope of work, crank up again. Based on his hourly rate and not to exceed it, it looks like the maximum he'll spend on the project is 80 hours. And it's quite a detailed and extensive scope of work here. And based on the two meetings that I've been to, I can see him spending possibly that entire 80 hours there. Of course, it depends on how far apart the parties are in their visioning exercise, too. And I've looked at his resume, and I have confidence that he can bring things together. But I could see something like this getting out of hand, too, and, you know, not coming to a consensus. Let's hope that he performs like he has in the past.
Yeah, and certainly we'll be monitoring this along the way in terms of where he is, in terms of his expenditures and what he has accomplished, so that we can make sure that we spend as minimal amount as we need to, but to accomplish something as well as we move along.
Do you have any idea where you're going to hold these meetings?
No, again, I'm going to have those discussions with him to see where he wants to hold them, if it's someplace very neutral. I really, we'll leave it up to him to ascertain that.
But it will be in the city?
Of course, yes.
Okay.
Let's...
A couple of things. The visioning, what we're doing here, once we come up with something, is that going to lead to adjusting the future land use plan, or...
Yes, it will be an amendment. The land use plan called for this area as a, an area that we needed to look at, yes. We will amend the land use plan, absolutely.
Okay. So it does have some further effect than just having the visioning plan, it will actually become some sort of official document that's a future land use plan?
Should it be approved by the city council?
Right, okay. I mean, I would guess, secondly, especially with the, well, I think in both cases, the parties are so far apart, there is no, I mean, I've been to several mediations before, usually on legal matters, and where you end up, there's no agreement on anything, the mediator decides. Everybody's so far apart, there is no consensus. Because to me, mediation as opposed to arbitration or something like that, there has to be buy-in from both parties to sign off on some sort of a plan or an agreement. Where in this case, it could come to the fact that they're just so far apart, you know, the homeowners want X and the landowners want Y, or they already kind of know what they want. And I realize they're trying to find some middle ground, but, you know, that could lead to that where there's no, any type of consensus. I mean, I don't believe, usually mediator doesn't have the power to say, well, this is what it's going to be based on what I've heard here. That sounds more like arbitration or something like that.
Right, we're really looking for some direction from the neighborhoods in terms of what they would be satisfied with, clearly. And we don't want to do this ourselves. I mean, the whole idea of planning is, is you want to bring everyone in.
Sure. And then lastly, specifically with the six acres, or five acres, I just gave them an extra acre. We've investigated, I know, I went to a stake, I came to a stakeholders meeting and there was a discussion between the various parties about legally, there was whether the parcels out along Highway Nine were actually part of the original subdivision, and whether they actually could do something different other than build a house there or whatever, like the rest of the neighborhood. Have we investigated that?
We have, sir, and we have proved that, that there are no covenants relating to the Five Acres subdivision. They are indeed free to develop them as they want. The only constraint, of course, at this moment is the zoning is AG1.
Right. Okay. Anybody else?
No.
Joe?
When do you plan on getting started?
Tomorrow. We have one group, the Five Acre group is ready. So we'll send those names over to Dr. Elliott tomorrow, should you approve the contract.
Just for the record as well, what is the, explain the process for promoting the meetings to the public, because that was an issue that a lot of people had at the meetings, was, you know, how are they notified of when, where, et cetera?
Well, we did encourage everyone to give us their email address so that we could send them individual invitations through the email. We also, of course, put all these meetings on our website and on our calendar. And we have the email blast for people who are already signed up. So there are different means that Jason does use to publish these meetings, they're all, they're all public, of course. But now that we have specific email addresses, we can target to those people who have attended past community meetings as well.
One more thing.
Clarence?
Oh. Does, does the meeting have to be opened up to the general public? Usually mediation involves specifically the parties, you try to determine who the parties are that are involved, you know, and a lot of times, it's a legal plaintiff and defendant. But, you know, here with, you know, to open it up to a general invitation, I mean, it could be a bit of a free for all.
I'll defer to our attorney.
Yep.
I can take a stab at that one. You know, I wouldn't want to be in a position at this point that we close the meeting. You know, do I think we'll accomplish less with it being wide open to the public? Absolutely. Yep, I think we will absolutely accomplish less, but I think that it is more of a risk to, to have the perception of it being a closed meeting, that I think that the balance is tilted towards it being a public meeting, that we just concede to the fact that we're probably not going to accomplish as much or as quickly. But, you know, I, this whole thing, one of the whole intertwining things that seems to be working along with this whole case is the fact that there's this sense of secrecy, which is just astounding and not true. But that's one of the things that I continue to hear woven through. I mean, the last time we talked about advertising, we went and we put signs up and down Highway Nine, well, they got stolen. So, you know, in response to that, we put a big bright message board out there and took the wheel off of it, and it couldn't get stolen. So, you know, you know, there...
You know, let me adjust some, too, because I think, you know, I see your point as, you know, if you're in mediation and a court issue and, you know, it's one party against the other, yeah, it would be more beneficial to not have it open to everybody. But, you know, this is more of what I see as an exercise that not just the people that back up to certain properties or live in a certain neighborhood, but it's our whole, you know, all our citizens to participate in a visioning study. The mediator can bring out some ideas that people may not be thinking about. Right now, you may have, you know, a property owner that wants to do X, and citizens that say, no, we want Y, absolutely, and there's no compromise. They may be able to feel people out and see if there's some, some middle ground, and then just give that recommendation. And then as we do the study and finish the study, maybe we include it that way or not, we're not bound to do that. But, you know, it may help, may help the whole process and, you know, get kind of what the community wants with also respect to the landowner, so. Anybody else? I bet, but point well taken. I think, you know, for the record, the council wants to make sure that this is not a, you know, a special circumstance where we're hiring a mediator, you know, for one or two specific properties. But more of a way to try to get this and get some ideas out there and some suggestions that may make sense. And again, they may recommend something, we may approve it in our, in our long-term vision on the properties, but then when it comes to zoning it, we may disapprove or, you know, we find out that, that no one, no one wants that or whatever. So it's not locking us into a zoning decision, am I correct? So.
All right. Any more questions for Kathy, or open up for a motion?
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve the consideration of a professional service agreement between the City of Milton and Michael Elliott, Ph.D., for the purpose of providing facilitation services for two sub-areas within the Route Nine North Visioning Study Area, Agenda Item Number 13-093.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Thurman, and second by Councilmember Coons. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, next item, if the clerk will call out.
Consideration of a resolution supporting a grant application to Firehouse Subs Foundation for the purchase of a fire safety education smokehouse, Agenda Item Number 13094, Mr. Matt Marietta.
Good evening. More important than getting to use all the fancy equipment and ladders and hoses and trucks that we have is trying to prevent fires from ever happening, especially trying to prevent injuries from those fires. So the fire service in general, and Milton Fire Department in specific, is very heavily involved in public education, specifically going around and visiting schools and daycares and community groups to try to teach things like stop, drop, and roll. And I'm sure some of y'all had this experience when you were younger and going through school where the firefighter came and talked to you. And, you know, those lessons, especially with the big red trucks and uniforms, tend to really stick out in kids' heads. And there's been actual situations where lives have been saved because of the lessons that children learn. One of the central features of fire safety education typically is the fire safety house. A lot of places, that takes the form of a trailer that they pull out to the scene, and then the kids go inside, and they have an educational experience with windows that rattle and smoke, and they get to get down on their knees and crawl out, and smoke alarms go off, and they get to learn how to get out of a house if there was a fire. That's an item that Milton does not have at this point. And every time that we get a request for something like this, I generally go and I ask Alfredo, or I ask Forsyth County to see if they have one available. And to this point, they've been fairly cooperative, supporting us in our educational endeavors. But every once in a while, they've got to commit it elsewhere. And it would be nice to be able to have that prop as a resource for our department, because we are very active in the community. So in what I'm applying for, if you read the agenda memo, it's actually an inflatable firehouse instead of a trailer. And it looks kind of like a bouncy house, but there's no bouncy on the floor. But the thing blows up, and it's, it would provide a different kind of a look when we go out on public education events and hopefully a draw, because it's something different that most of the kids have not seen. And this, this item, we'll be able to fill up with smoke, and we'll have smoke detectors that'll go off and teach kids how to get down and crawl out of the house. And specifically as part of an exit drills in the home program that we're trying to, we're trying to put out in the community. This is my initial means of trying to fund this item would be through a grant application. When the Firehouse Subs Restaurant first formed right over here on Highway Nine, one of the managers approached a member of our fire administration and talked about the foundation and that they reach out and they'd like to be involved with the community. And actually, I think Peachtree City got a grant from them as well today, it was announced in the newspaper, to support safety in their community through the Firehouse Subs Foundation. So we started looking into that idea and found that the range for this item that we'd like to purchase falls right into what they typically fund, which is around $12,000 for turnkey, for everything that we need. And before we approached the local franchisee, we wanted to come before the council and also request your blessing on pursuing this grant opportunity to try to enhance our education program. And I'll be happy to answer any questions y'all have.
Sounds like a great idea.
Yeah, sounds great.
Anything we can do to teach our kids something that may save theirs or others' lives, and as well as our adults is great. What, anybody have any questions, or Bill?
So are we in the running along with other jurisdictions for this grant?
They actually have a rolling deadline where they'll, they'll consider grants two or three times a year. And it's wherever they have franchises. Basically, the Firehouse Subs looks for places with local franchises to become more involved in the community. So I would imagine we're in the running with any other location with a franchise with an active fire department in it that wants to request funds.
Okay, anybody else? Karen?
Will the council get to try it out when you get it?
Of course, y'all are always welcome.
No, don't you have a birthday coming up soon, Karen? I can just say it. The jumping house and slide.
I quit having birthdays a while ago.
Okay, all right. No other...
Go ahead.
No. If you'd like a motion, go ahead.
I'll go make a motion.
Yeah, go ahead.
Mayor, I propose that we approve the consideration of a resolution supporting the grant application to Firehouse Subs Foundation for the purchase of a fire safety education smokehouse, Agenda Item 13094.
Second.
Okay, got a motion by Councilmember Lard, second by Councilmember Coons.
This guy.
Okay, is that okay?
I'm trying to think there, for a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. All right, we can move on to our next item. And Peyton, I'm sorry that you're kind of near the end, but we wanted to make, you know, that's part of the requirements for volunteering, we're testing you to see if you have the stamina and, you know, stomach to sit through some long meetings. All right, City Clerk, please call the next item.
Next item is consideration of a resolution, amending resolution number 1001127, a resolution appointing a board member for District One to the Planning Commission. This is Agenda Item Number 13095.
Yeah, I would ask for your approval of Peyton Jameson for the Planning Commission. Peyton is a native of Roswell, Georgia, where he currently serves as a Vice President of Diversified Financial Planning. And Diversified Financial Planning is an investment management company with over 200 million in assets under management. Prior to his current position, Peyton was employed for, with Citigroup, Smith Barney in Atlanta. He's active in the Crab Apple community, serving as President of the Crab Apple Community Association and HOA Treasurer of the Crab Apple Crossing, where he and his wife Megan live with her two adorable children, Tripp and Mallory. They're members of Alfreda United Methodist Church and own Just For Giggles in downtown Crab Apple. Peyton is a graduate of Roswell High School and earned his BS in Business from Auburn University. That got Burt's vote very quickly.
Second motion.
Okay. No further ado. Someone else make a motion?
I'll make a motion to appoint Peyton Jameson as a board member for District One to the Planning Commission, Agenda Item 03, excuse me, 13095.
Second motion. Okay, we got a motion for approval for to, or for nomination of Peyton Jameson to serve on the Planning Commission. I have a second by Councilmember Lusk, I believe. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
to serve on the Planning Commission. Have a, second by Councilmember Lusk, I believe. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Um, Peyton, if you want to step forward, we can, uh, go ahead and do your oath. We're one-stop shopping here.
Okay, if you will raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
In deference.
In deference.
That I will faithfully perform the duties of.
That I will faithfully perform the duties of.
The Planning Commission member.
The Planning Commission member.
Of the city.
Of the city.
And that I will support and defend the charter thereof.
I will support and defend the charter thereof.
As well as the Constitution.
As well as the Constitution.
And the laws of the state of Georgia.
Laws of the state of Georgia.
And of the United States of America.
And of the United States of America.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate you supporting us and helping us and congratulations. Excited to have you.
As I always say, we, uh, our volunteers are really good. We'll make this definitely.
Thank you.
Now, all this stuff with the Visiting Committee and all that, we'll put Peyton's number on the website.
Good luck.
Good luck. Okay, I, uh, other than that, is there anything else that, uh, anybody wants to report on? Hopefully, some of you guys had a good spring break and back to work now.
Spring break.
So, not all of you.
Your Earth Day is coming up on April 20th.
Yes.
Yep, and, uh, excited to think about that. It's in our park.
In Friendship Park.
Yeah, our new park, so that, uh, makes it, makes it fun. Chris, you look like.
He looks like he's official tonight.
You know?
Swear, I sit there and I, you know, forget what y'all look like as we're sitting.
Could you please state your name and address for the record?
I will. Couple of staff reports, um, tonight, and, uh, one a little bit more lengthy than the others. Let me get the couple that aren't lengthy out of the way. Um, want to ask y'all to write down the date of May the third. Um, kind of blocked it off, it's a Friday. I'm envisioning a two-day strategic plan update, um, session. The Thursday will likely be a staff-driven day, and then the Friday will be the council-driven with some staff interaction day. Believe it or not, we're already to almost the end of the second year of our three-year strategic plan, so we need to go ahead and make sure that it doesn't expire and us not have tacked on, um, some additional time to it. So, um, how time flies. So please just mark out a, or May the third. Um, want to let you know as well that later this week, the Transforming Local Government Conference is coming to Atlanta of all places, so I took the opportunity to, um, to attend and, and, and learn about some stuff that's going on down there. And, uh, will be a part of a, a research collaborative that starts on Thursday. You don't often get the opportunity to have this type of a caliber of a thing come to the East Coast and then for me to be able to attend it. The Transforming Local Government Conferences have typically aligned themselves on the West Coast with the Alliance for Innovation, so, um, good to have a lot of city representatives coming to Atlanta later this week. That'll be Wednesday, Thursday, and part of Friday. Let me make an additional, uh, I guess, kind of a report. I don't know that I'm asking necessarily tonight for a decision or an answer, but I am going to be asking for a decision or an answer, um, pretty quick. And, and part of that is because we're, um, doing our best to move forward with the senior programming that, uh, we're going to deliver initially off-site, um, in Milton, and then we'll move it to the Hopewell House once the Hopewell House renovation is complete. One of the things that we've talked about since the beginning of time is that we would, uh, be able to use our community development block grant funds to fund either part of the renovation, to fund future programming, to fund things, assorted things attached to the senior services program delivered at the Hopewell House. And we can. So this isn't me standing up here telling you that, no, we can't. But it comes with a set of criteria, and I want to walk through those criteria with you and just get your general reaction as to whether or not this is something that we have interest in participating in or not. By way of a little bit of background, um, we are unique in the fact that we do not have more than 50,000 people in our community, so we are not eligible to administer our own community development block grant funds. So if you were to call around to the other cities and call Alpharetta, Roswell, and Johns Creek, and Sandy Springs, they don't have the same issue that we have as Milton because we have 32,000 and they're all more than 50,000. They all administer their own funds. And in administering their own funds, that means they get those funds direct from HUD. And they can make certain assumptions as they administer those funds. They're still held accountable to the same audits that everybody else would be. But seniors as a class routinely are considered by policy to be low to moderate income because quite frequently many of them live on fixed incomes. You know, we don't have a census tract in Milton that shows we're low to moderate income and that, that's why we haven't used community development block grant funds to this point. Uh, but now we have the opportunity, we thought, um, with the senior programming, um, to provide a service to a, a protected class or a class that would be considered low to moderate income. Fulton County doesn't look at it that way. Um, and Fulton County looks at it in probably a very fine way. It's a very fine way to them, um, but they check and double-check after they went through an audit, I guess, several years ago and didn't have necessarily a favorable outcome. And now they collect a lot of information, and they collect a lot of information from every person that potentially uses their programs. They've made their own internal determination that now instead of it being the income of the person, it's the income of the family that the person is with. So if the household income, um, takes this senior out of the low to moderate income range, even if the senior might be, um, they don't qualify as being low to moderate income of, according to Fulton County. What you've been provided tonight is a five-page handout. This is an example of the handout that would go to every senior that elected to participate in our programs. Ask some pretty personal stuff. Um, and when I looked at it on the front end, I thought, you know, I don't know, um, what the direction here should be. I don't know if we're comfortable as a group administering or delivering a program in our community that would potentially cause our citizens to have to respond to this type of questionnaire. There are other requirements that come with, uh, being the recipient of CDBG funds. It, uh, you know, there's, there would be certain restrictions as to how the building could be used. There'd be certain restrictions as to the contractors we would have to hire to do work there. Um, there's certain restrictions as to the wage they have to make, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Some of these things that come with, uh, accepting dollars from HUD. And I pose the question to you, what value are those restrictions? Because that's the question that really, if, if it's a dollars and cents decision, that's the question we have to answer. To give you some sense of, of revenues that we would receive from CDBG funds, um, on an ongoing basis would be about $50,000 a year. We have the ability to, um, receive the first three years, um, initially on the onset of the pro, on the outset, onset of the program. Um, so what we're talking about tonight is, is, tonight and probably at the next council meeting or even at the, at the work session, is about $150,000 against our project and then $50,000 a year, give or take, it's, you know, in change, um, going forward. And, you know, I've had discussions with our city attorney, I've had discussions with our staff, and it really becomes, you know, the restrictions that they're going to place on us as a part of taking those dollars, what are they worth? Are they worth 50,000 bucks a year? And that's the question, I guess, I'm coming to ask you. Um, I've got our staff here that's prepared to answer the questions that you might have about what being a participant in a CDBG funding program is. We've looked for a way to try to spend those dollars since the city incorporated because every year we've just been leaving them on the table because frankly, we don't have a census tract that qualifies. And, uh, you know, we thought that this was one, our first opportunity to take those dollars and take them off the table. It's just coming with a tremendous set of restrictions. I, I will close the gap and let you know that we too reached out to HUD and said, HUD, is there any way you would interject on our behalf? This seems to be a different practice that, that is typical in the area in which we're delivering services. And their response, and I'm not quoting their response, but their response generally was that we wouldn't necessarily require this type of paperwork, but if the jurisdiction that is administering your dollars requires it, we're going to tell you, you have to comply with it. So we're not going to get involved to tell you, you don't. And we would support the fact that they are collecting the information. So, um, you know, if this is a requirement of the county, which they have told us it is, um, we either have to agree to move forward with that requirement in place and the works that come along with accepting CDBG funds, or we can say, not for us right now, and move on more locally funding the project and if we ever wanted to explore, uh, CDBG funds and senior services in the future, or if we happen to at some point in the future have a census tract that qualified, we could certainly go back after them. So, I'll stop talking, I'll tell you that's here tonight for, um, the purposes of a discussion and, and, and please give me some direction as to whether or not you'd like to pursue this or not.
The, um, information that's in here obviously is financial information, and if that information were collected, if we said yes on that and it wasn't collected, is that then public?
You know, the, you didn't get the opportunity to read the fine print of the first three papers, uh, the first three pages. What you'll find in here is that if, once this information's collected, if it is stored correctly, which I would say that if it's a requirement of Milton to store it, it will be stored correctly. If it's a requirement to store, if somebody else has stored it, they will have to store it correctly. But the way that it's supposed to work is these back two pages are supposed to be assigned a unique number that is on both pages, but then these pages are supposed to be separated and not stored together. So that if you came across one, you would know dollar figures, and if you came across the other, you would know inform, you would know person. But if the documents weren't together, you would never know person and dollar figures in the same place unless you had access to the roster that would keep what this unique number was to it. So I believe the answer to your question is no, not public, if it's, if the storage mechanism is, is secure.
Are they, are they stored by HUD or is they stored by the county?
You know, my gut tells me we store it locally and then it would be reviewed by HUD if it needed to be reviewed by HUD at some point because this isn't a requirement of HUD to collect this information, so.
So if it was stored locally, it'd be by us to separate as a city staff?
But, okay, so yes, but it would be monitored by Fulton County.
Karen?
This is a county, yeah, this, this whole five-page packet is a, is a county requirement. I don't know if I made that clear. This is not a HUD requirement, it's a county requirement.
I've got two questions. Number one, this 50,000 a year, is it a use it or lose it type thing?
It is. If we don't collect it, it is distributed on a percentage basis across those that do choose to use.
And number two, is there any way we could partner up with somebody else like Alpharetta to do this rather than doing what with Fulton County?
That's a great question, and I asked that question, and all I got was a bunch of people that stuck their fingers in their ears and said, oh, don't, don't let me hear you say that. So, um, I'm not exactly sure why that was the case, but, uh, um, I, I could look into that further if, if you want to. I don't know that there's a requirement that it has to go through the county, although, um...
I, I would like to explore that because if we could partner up with Alpharetta, especially since, you know, our borderlines are such that realistically seniors from one city use the facilities of, of the other city, then I, I think that might be a, a way, if we could do that and they would, willing to let us do that, that we could promote this as another joint partnership between the two cities.
Yeah, we'll, we'll ask the question as to whether or not, number one, it's legal, uh, n- number two, possible, number three, my gut tells me that there's going to be, the question would be whether or not Fulton would have to consent to that. And I don't know the answer to that.
I think I would ask for HUD, not Fulton, because Fulton is not going to...
Oh, no, I, yeah, I, I agree with you there. Yeah, the first step is to find out if it's legal and if it's possible. The second question then is if it requires county consent, uh, we would need to strategize how we, how we do that.
No.
You certainly would probably only have to, you'd have to count to four, you'd never be able to count to seven, so.
No.
Be lucky to count to four.
Not up here and put out north Fulton.
Be lucky to count to four.
Understand that, uh, as a requirement of a HUD, uh, grant like this, that Davis Bacon wage rates would apply to any construction.
That's correct.
Probably the worst pieces of legislation that ever hit, uh, the United States, I think, uh, one that inflates the cost of, uh, construction to any owner out there. And in this case, it would be to the City of Milton.
That's correct.
So I'll reserve my final answer until later, but, um, I think, I take this, these, I think this whole thing with Fulton County, reporting to Fulton County is, uh, in imposition, is an infringement on, on, uh, personal information. And I don't care to give Fulton County any more information than what they already have on me.
Fair enough.
Joe?
Yeah, so, um, your original question was, you know, should we go through the trouble? I mean, do we think that there's a, a need in Milton for this? I mean, isn't this kind of information that we, the census provided us? The number of households in our city boundaries that would qualify for this? I mean, can't we do some pretty targeted, uh, um, work in terms of identifying those people?
We can do some targeted, a- absolutely. To, to your question, yes. Well, we did the market study to show that there's a need, and we did a market study to show that there's a need that probably exists with a low to moderate income type program. You know, the thing is to, is to getting the balance right. And, you know, we have to serve 51% of the people in this program have to be served that qualify as low to moderate income. So, you know, we, we would need to target our recruitment to make sure that 51% of the program participants would qualify low to mod. So it, I don't know that it would be to the level of, let's just, let's just use easy numbers here. Let's say we had 30 people participating in the program. Um, I don't want to be in the position at some point, or I don't think you all would want to be in the position where we all of a sudden are counting and go, okay, we've got 16 that are low to mod and we got 14 people in our program that aren't, and, you know, all of a sudden we lose one of the 16, does that mean I got to tell one of the 14 they can't come until I find another 16? And that feels a little bit weird, um, probably doable, but we would definitely have to target our recruitment into the program to make sure that 51% um, meet this criteria.
Are you wanting us to give you some guidance on whether or not it's, uh, worth the effort to, to do the program? Or are you looking for, I'm, I'm trying to understand what kind of guidance you're looking for us.
I'm looking for a couple of different things. Re- recognizing that we are going to be asking the people that participate in what is, appears to be our program, if we're comfortable asking, number one, this kind of information. Number two, as we move forward to Councilmember Lusk's point, there are other requirements that come with taking these dollars, being the Davis Bacon wages, being the number of hours a week that this facility has to be used for the defined purpose, um, the, you know, there, there's other requirements that come with taking this money, and I'm just trying to get an initial assessment. If, if we weren't doing a whole bunch of personal data collecting, you know, we'd probably find a way to, to navigate through some of that other stuff. I just, I'm just trying to get a sense of whether or not, uh, these requirements are big enough that we even need to have this discussion.
Matt.
And, and, you know, if, if we got the dollars versus if we didn't, I guess the question is, is, you know, could we do what we're trying to do on our own? And describe for us as well and for the audience, you know, if we get the dollars, step by step, you know, this money is used for specific programs that do what?
We are partnering with Senior Services North Fulton to offer a first, um, basically senior program in, in, in Milton. There's an example of a similar senior-type center that exists right now in the basement of the Crab Apple Government Center, building that's owned by Alpharetta. So there's an example of what we'd be doing. It's a, it, the, the county through Senior Services North Fulton allocated in this first year operating dollars to fund the, the programmatic delivery of that service. And, uh, we're going to start drawing down against that money by initially offering service in an off-site location until our facility is ready. So do the, does this $50,000 drive the whole program and drive the whole program's funding? It does not. You know, the, the services that, uh, the allocation of Fulton County through Senior Services North Fulton has attributed to the program aspect of this funding is just south of 300,000, um, in the first year. So, you know, this would be potentially used to offset, uh, um, here in the beginning, I'd use it to offset the renovation and construction of the facility. And then it would be used to enhance programming going forward. But, uh, as you all know, we've got the line item in the capital projects, uh, account in the budget, whether you agreed with it or you didn't. At renovation, about $700,000 in the Hopewell House, 150 of that would be CDBG funds if we choose to accept. we choose to accept them. I hope that frames the magnitude of what we're looking at.
Bert?
It seems like too, though, with the administration cost and then the, the wage and, you know, regulations, and perhaps, you said, maybe even some select contractors that we use, the $50,000 could cost us 60.
Ken, do you want to, you've had some experience with that. Do you want to weigh in on your?
Well, a couple of things that Chris has said tonight that permeate with me. I mean, I've dealt with these in other jurisdictions before. First of all, whenever you get federal dollars, it makes me nervous simply because they typically come with a large variety of requirements. Some of them you may know, some of them, quite frankly, you may not know. Right now, we're dealing with some issues with, with GDOT where they are actually having to come in and take a look at some of our books to make sure that we are complying with all of the federal requirements, because we are, we are touching federal dollars in any other contractual aspect of the county. So, it's a real, it's a little challenging. And secondly, yeah, there can be the unexpected consequences and the unanticipated costs that may in fact make this grant actually bear with it some, some additional dollars as well. So, sometimes it can seem like you're getting $50,000, but the cost sometimes of simply complying with all the rules can lead to that.
I'd just like to say, you know, I'm not, I'm not getting a warm and fuzzy. Obviously, it's not something you have to decide tonight, but if you guys can mull over it and...
And I need to answer Karen's question about, I'll answer that officially before our next meeting.
Yeah, yeah, but I mean...
My only concern is the fact that we went forward with this whole thing in the very beginning because of the CDBG money, and it just concerns me a little bit that we've gotten so far down a path now this funds may not be to our advantage that, I've been concerned all along about this path, and, and we keep going down the path, and, and I'm just worried about what this is going to end up costing us in the long run, especially if we don't use these funds and it ends up being a lot more expensive of a endeavor that, than we had originally anticipated it being.
Yeah, you know, there's, there's some, there's some stop points that exist out there. You know, this is, you know, this is senior programming funding that's, that's coming from Fulton County, that's a, that's a first-year fund, right? So, you know, there's, there's a stop point. If it doesn't fund in year two, we've got a natural stop point.
But we've spent awful lot of money on the, the house and the facilities if it doesn't go forward. So, I mean, that's, that's a tremendous amount of money we have spent out of our limited budget for that facility if it doesn't, if it's not used for what we intended it to be long-term.
It, right, but I understand that there's also, that that, there's differing views amongst the members of council as to whether or not that we would be renovating that building anyway, I guess, so I'll have to let you all debate the politics of that.
Matt?
I kind of see the house and the program as two separate things. I mean, I, I like the idea of the program for what they're doing, you know, I think that's a good admirable goal from that standpoint. My question is, is, you know, obviously, I voted against the Hopewell House from that standpoint, primarily for Karen's concerns as well. The, the question I, I have is, you know, for that program without the house, you know, and we have a, a current place already in partnership that we could use, you just mentioned, right? How much of a contribution would be needed? Would it be the whole 50,000 if that program was there? Would it be 25,000? Would it be 20,000? You know, what would happen if we decided not to do it, forget the house, but just the program in and of itself, if it could be? You know, I'm just trying to gauge, you know, what are the options? If, if the house wasn't concerned, obviously, the 50,000 was there, if we said no to this, then could the city then fund the program on its own in partnership with a good program? And I, I just don't know if we have an answer to that. Does that make sense?
I think I've followed you, yeah, and I could, I could give you a list of a bunch of qualifiers and then answer your question. I don't, you know, I don't know that, you know, right now, we have located a, a spot that's willing to be used on a temporary basis, subject to us having our own facility open, you know, at the, at the end of more or less a construction period. So, I, you know, there's that question that would be, that would have to be answered. The answer to your question is, we can, we can deliver just about any program we want to deliver, you know, if, if Milton wants to embark on its own senior services and not have a Senior Services North Fulton program in its community, we're capable of that as well. You know, we just, I'd, I'd have to have a more concrete vision to, from the council to be able to give you a definitive answer.
Sure. I would like to explore that.
Yeah, I still think it's a, a need. We have the, I mean, we have the property, but again, I don't have a form of fuzzy about CDBG. And having, especially federal strings attached to, to funding, plus we took the money, got, you know, the funds, took the money, are the requirements in perpetuity for the entire history, life of the operation of the facility?
My understanding is that the requirements are there until you elect to no longer receive the funds.
Till you what?
Until you elect to no longer receive the funds.
Okay.
You know, committing yourself in perpetuity to any of these things, but the day that you stop receiving them, then you can do what you want to do with your property that doesn't have to meet the requirements.
Yeah. I just, you know, I see too much in terms lately, in terms of money coming from Washington that have way too many strings attached to them, terms of use of it. I'm not for that, but I, I do like, in fact, the program, I think we've talked about other associated uses for this property as well, and I don't want to be restricted on those other uses as well.
Yeah, I'd go along with Karen's proposal, trying to associate with Alpharetta. If this is a Fulton County policy, can't we appeal to the Board of Commissioners?
Sure.
Through our representative...
If you, yes, I mean, that's, if you all feel that, you know, we've, we've taken it from a staff perspective, if you all feel that there's some advantage into putting a little political pressure on Fulton County, I wouldn't, I wouldn't get in your way.
Okay. Do you have enough?
I do. I've, I've, I've got enough to work on, that we don't have to get to any better of an answer tonight. You know, that, that's a, I'll get an official answer to that question. It's, it's a good question. It's a fair, fair question. Honestly, I'd pick any of the cities up here to partner with if we could find, if, if we found out that that was an option, and then we'd probably just have this behind us and have a, have a, have a good answer, so. We forgot the answer to that. Matt, you wanted something, you wanted something explored, and I wrote down, what does Matt want researched with a question mark? Because I know you said I want to explore something, but I think, I'm not exactly sure I'm walking out with a clear vision of what I'm looking at.
It's a partnership with the program.
Okay.
With Fulton Services. You know, if, if we did, you know, aside from the Hopewell House and where they are, if there was a construction of another facility or something, or maybe Bethel Community Center, I don't know, what would then, without those guidelines, if we wanted to put money into a program to partner with that program, without all the restrictions and requesting financial information to people that may want to use it, what would then that dollar figure wind up being on an annual basis? You know, is it 25? Is it half? Is it all? You know, on, you know, from that standpoint. Obviously, there's other things to consider with regards to the current contractual obligations with the facilities being used, but I'm just thinking, you know, aside from spending between 1.1 and 1.3 million dollars for a new facility, you know, what could we wind up then doing for a partnership program that may be more creative than what we're looking at?
Okay. Would it be a fair place to start to look at, because we have an example of that very close to us. We have an example of a Senior Services North Fulton program being delivered in the basement of the Crab Apple Government Center, as well as a comparable Golden Age Club delivered at the North Park Senior Facility.
Sure.
Is, is that a first fair comparison to look at?
If you think it matches the service and quality that we're expecting?
Well, see, I don't know that you're going to get that, and the reason I don't think you're going to get that is because I think you're catering to a different, those programs cater to different types of seniors.
Got it.
The, the Golden Age Club deals with a very active group of seniors that is commute in, that, you know, drive in and, and participate in some programs and, and drive home. The Senior Services North Fulton programs is largely driven by those that are brought to the center by county-provided transportation. So, the more homebound that are just looking to get out. So, I don't know that you're going to have a comparable, I mean, I can do the best I can do, but I don't know that you're going to have a comparable apple-to-apple comparison, one being a city-delivered versus a county-delivered Senior Services North Fulton program.
Sure.
Let me, you know, offline after tonight, let me sit down with Kathy. Will we sit down tomorrow and talk about how we might, we might be able to do?
And I'm flexible well throughout the week if you need to sit down or something. No problem.
Okay. Good deal. I think I've got a better vision of what you were asking for.
Okay. You have other reports?
I don't. That's it for tonight. We don't need an executive session, so. I hear you made, I hear you made a good presentation at Rotary today?
Thanks. I wish we couldn't get the volume up. Had to add live. All right, anything else?
Thank you all, appreciate it.
Thank you, Chris. If not, I will open up to adjourn to me.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second motion.
Yeah, the motion is second to adjourn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
opposed? That's unanimous.